Good afternoon. Go back to your seats, councilors. Where about children? We're about to start. Okay, 54th regular session of the 20th City Council is now called to order. invocation, Honorable Councilor Roger Abadai, then followed by the singing of Lupang Hinirang, then Kagayan Dioro March. Please rise.
Will you please stand? Shall we pause for a moment to feel the Holy Spirit, the presence of the Holy Spirit? Glory be to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, as it was in the beginning, now, and ever shall be, world without end. Amen. Heavenly Father, we stand before you today to praise and thank you for all goodness you give to us. We also ask you through your Holy Son, Jesus Christ, that you forgive us all our sins in the past and to present. We also ask you through your Holy Spirit that you will guide us, give us wisdom and support as we begin this session. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Keep our nation, our city under your care. Bless the leader of the land and those who have been in position of authority among us, that they be guided by your Holy Spirit. Be high in purpose, wise in counsel, firm in good resolution and unwavering duty that under the theme that we may be governed quietly and peaceably. Gracious God, regard all those who are in trouble, victims of typhoons, earthquakes, floods, war, and any form of danger, and all those in difficult situation, help and comfort them, strengthen and provide their immediate needs, heal and bring peace among us. Lord God, we have so many things to ask you, especially our salvation. We pray that you will give it in a proper time in accordance with your will. In Jesus' name, your Son we pray. Amen. Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Please be seated. Mr. Secretary, please do the roll call.
Honorable Jocelyn B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer. For the First District Councilors: Honorable Agapito Roberto Giswan, Honorable Roger G. Abadai, Honorable J.R. Pasqual Onlee, Honorable Aimy Rose P. Moreno, Honorable Romeo V. Kaliso, Honorable George S. Goking, Honorable C.P.P.S. Abu Junior, Honorable Malvern I. Sparsia. For the Second District Councilors: Honorable Ibuna Yasin B. Imano, Honorable Maria Lordes Isgaani, Honorable Jalen Mercedes El Balaba, Honorable James K. Judith II, Honorable Ian Mark Nacaya, Honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas, Honorable Christian Rustico M. Atchas, Honorable Josec G. Magtahas Daba Onlee. Ex-official members: Honorable Yan Lam Es Lim, Lingana Mangabaranget President, and Honorable Jan Michael Elsano, City SK Federation President. There is Korom, Madam Presiding Officer.
Korom is certified. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, our friends from the media, councilors, those who are watching today, fellow Kagayanos, Mayong Hapon, Canatung Tanayn. So, Majority Floor Leader, Attorney Edgar Cabanlas, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam.
Excuse me. We have a birthday celebrant today that we will be singing, to be sung by... To be sung by is the birthday of Counselor... Majority of the floor leader, Attorney, Councilor Attorney Edgar Cabanlas. Please lead the song, the birthday song. You say "Kanta"? Bernie, please lead the birthday song. Please rise.
No problem. It's my honor to sing a happy birthday song to the Majority Floor Leader. Everybody? Happy birthday to you! Happy birthday to you! Happy birthday, happy birthday! Happy birthday to you! Faster! Happy birthday to you! Happy birthday to you! Happy birthday, happy birthday! Happy birthday to you! How old are you?
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, you have the floor now, Majority Floor Leader, at Councilor Attorney Edgar Cabanlas.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Bernie, for that beautiful song. That would be part of the democratic process.
Yeah, correct.
Anyway, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Vice Mayor Bibo Rodriguez, members of the City Council, our friends in the media, people of Kagayan Dioro. Good afternoon. Madam Chair, I move to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous regular session of this council and to consider the furnishing thereof as... copies thereof as reading itself.
Second, an objection. I hear none motion is here by Cardid.
Move to approve, said minutes, Madam Chair.
And a second, objection. I hear none motion is here by Cardid.
On the special report portion, we have, I think, four. Only one is listed here. Number one would be Councilor Ian Mark Nacaya, who will be reporting on the Center of Excellence in White Water Rafting and the training hub for swift water and flood rescue. And also, Councilor Bernie Sparsia, who will be reporting on his discovery on the 722 relocation project in Pahiron, Lumbia, DCP. Then we have Councilor Roger Abadai, who will be reporting on the UN Habitat on water waste management. And last would be me, Madam Chair, if I have the time. I will be reporting on my desire to... To make this the use of all public markets CR or comfort rooms until it's free from any fees or whatever. That would be the sequence of the reporting, Madam Chair. May I request, Madam Chair, that Councilor Ian Mark Nacaya be recognized.
Okay, Councilor Ian Mark Nacaya, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer, Mr. Majority Floor Leader, who leads in the council, fellow Kagayanos from media, Mayong Hapon. For more than three decades already, Madam Presiding Officer, the Kagayan River rafting has been popularized by the Oro Rafters Association, by the locals. In fact, incidentally, Madam Presiding Officer, two or three of them out of five or six were my classmates in high school. After they finished college, they eventually turned into a businessman to facilitate their aspirations on adventure they created among themselves, which turned the directions of tourism heaven in the city into looking at what we have at the white water, which is the Kagayan Dioro. And what have we in the Kageyan Dioro River? Even up to more than 30 years, they have still existed as operators in the whitewater rafting. In fact, they already hosted national and international trainings, even competitions, Madam Presiding Officer. Because in the Philippines, out of the many rivers in the Philippines, the only two competing rivers which can pass international approval for competition is Kageyan Valley and Kageyan Dioro. But Kageyan Valley has its own season, up to 10 months only, free-flowing water from uphill down. But in our city, we are graced with the 12-months-one-year-round availability of water. And I hope it will continue even with the progress and development of the uphill communities and the city of Kageyan Dioro. What our Kageyan Dioro River rafters are trying to ask from us, even if, Madam Presiding Officer, is since they have already conducted international trainings for swift water, they call it, according to Chisum Christopher T. Factora, the president of Oro Rafters Association, the Swift Water and Flood Rescue Technician Trainings Courses, they have done that twice this year, facilitated by the SRT from Jetafex, a certified Rescue III Europe Training Provider based in the United Kingdom. In other words, Jetafex sent a personality, a trainer that would train the locals of Kageyan Dioro and some parts of Bukidnon who have attended twice already this Swift Water Rescue Training, Madam Presiding Officer. They are asking that we declare the Kageyan Dioro River as a hub of this. May I check the messenger that was sent to me earlier? Actually, last week. To declare as a Center of Excellence in Whitewater River Rafting and the Training Hub for Swift Water and Flood Rescue with, of course, our support if needed, facilities to be installed and constructed in the areas where they are supposed to be installed and provided, Madam Presiding Officer. Second, we'll pass a resolution addressed to Jetafex, as I have mentioned earlier. And I have already provided Dakarla, Ms. Secretary, sent it to your messenger, so that we can also ask the Trainings Hub in Europe to recognize also the city of Kageyan Dioro as the Swift Water and Flood Rescue Hub. So, two points for us to locally declare and ask, of course, the support of the Tourism Department, Madam Presiding Officer, and the city of Kageyan Dioro to allocate portions of our budget to support the endeavor, considering that this is the only event and only tourist attraction that we can have with pride, say that it's only in Kageyan Dioro. The second is addressed to a European Training Hub for us to be recognized as such, Madam Presiding Officer. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya. Any comment? So, your prayer now, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya, is the two. Are we not looking into this matter, especially in this quarrying somewhere along the river? I have been talking to these owners of the River Rafting grupo. The main problem that they have is this quarrying. I supposedly, what I heard is that that destroy the, what you call this? That destroy the rapids, that destroy also, supposedly, the green. So, are we also looking into that matter?
Actually, Madam Presiding Officer, that's a good reaction. And another perspective of looking at the situation. If we declare this as a tourism heaven, as a swift white river rafting Training Center, so we should protect.
Correct.
And therefore, if we protect this line of length of river, water passage, channel, so we should provide regulatory measures. And those illegal, even legitimate quarrying should be stopped in favor of this tourism attraction, an event that we should all should support.
Actually, that is a very, that is a main problem even before and never addressed. I hope that this we refer to the committee and have a solid ground on how we will be able to manage again, make River Rafting the main tourist attraction without any more of this unsightly. Unsightly, mga kitang, mga bako somewhere. I mean, I had the River Rafting before. So, guapo kaayo, as you go along, guapo kaay karon. It's very, very annoying. Hope we can again refer that to the committee on environment, is that environment? Yes, Counselor, Majority Floor Leader Counselor.
And tourism.
And tourism, yes.
Yes, I agree with Counselor Nakaya about this particular issue. But let us refer this to the committee on tourism.
And environment, yeah.
They will work together on how to fashion the resolution and other measures, Madam Chair. So, unless there are other questions, Madam Chair.
Any question, yes. Counselor Roger Abadai?
Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Officer. I would just like to react with the special reporter with regards to the observation about legitimate quarrying along the river of Kageyan Dioro. Now, we have done an investigation. Okularly, we inspected that together with the Tourism Office, mga personnel, and Clean Row. Then we have investigated whether that quarrying, really disturbed the, or disrupt the Kening atong water rafting. Actually, it did not change the flow or the rapidness of the river. But what is not good to look at is the equipment, labinang naas along the river. But they were already warned that they will not encroach to their area. So, more of them are claiming the equipment, kamang dito, encroach dito sa suba. So, that is one of the regulations that the Clean Row or the city must have to strictly regulate the operation. But to ban or to stop the quarrying, I think we have to balance also. We have to balance this situation because quarrying is also necessity for our development. They are also contributory to our development in the city. Much so, the rafting also is also part of our tourism attraction and it's also part of our, it can also generate tourists and financially, it can also contribute. But we have to balance these two. So, I think another round of inspection of the Office of Tourism and the Environment so that we will really see and we can remedy the situation, Madam Chair and my colleagues. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Roger Abadai. Yes, Attorney Counselor James Judith, again, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya.
Opay, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, pagti-gaya namos sa usakahiring dito joint mga nito sa commitin' tourism and environment sa gipanguluhan ni Counselor Roger Abadai. Ang reklamo ali sa atong mga whitewater rafting associations sa mga kada iya mga pundok, kay kuno na usab na ang natural geographic o topographical feature sa ato baling suba. Nawala ng katahom ni ini, labina sa kinatibukan sa gitawag na to nga ruta sa whitewater rafting. Sumoni akong ingon nga, katong mayo man ang report ni Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya nga idiklara na to as Center of Excellence in Whitewater Rafting. Pero unsaon man ato nga, unsa may kapuslanan sa pagdiklara na to nga mismo naman ang Kening atong mga pundok nagipanguluhan ni Chisum Factora, kung ako masayok, sila naman nag-ingon nga wala na atras na sila, ogdili na sila la dinis sa atong dakbayan, kay wala lagi suporta sa atong LGO, labina sa isa lagi ng ilang ipangayo ang pagprotekta sa natural topographical feature ang katahom sa nakto't kapagastorya, ang katahom sa atong suba sa kinatibok ang kurso ni ini. Naga-salamat, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Attorney Counselor James Judith. Yes, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya, you recognize?
Actually, they are reaching out, Madam Presiding Officer. In fact, just a week or two weeks ago, Mr. Mike Banyos made an article about this training provided by a European citizen, which I have already mentioned earlier. They are reaching out that even with the burden that they have experienced. The experience nga sila ang nag-una sa Tibok Pilipinas dahil paggumanda ang wag i-support kakakita, kakabati. But ginahan ko sila, kay wagin sila nagundang. Wagin nagundang, tinuod ang resultin ng Counselor Judith ang topography dia, napriha. So, kung beginner kagdiya nga mag-guide, na patay. Kung ang imong naibalang, panginong naanuntah. Dabi ko ang batuna day ang nadina, so disgrasya. So, muna siya, they do the training, they conduct the trainings every now and then for the guides to eventually understand the route of this River Rafting activity. And I hope that we can separate the issue while we agree on supporting this group to declare and at the same time to push for this as our main attraction in Kageyan Dioro. But on the other side of the environment is a separate issue. Work on it, do what is necessary. And push for either or at the same time accordingly to what is right and appropriate for the environment and at the same time for our tourism.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya. Yes, last, Counselor Bernie Espasia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sa atong mga nagtanaw karon, sa atong mga kauban, mayong hapon. Madam Chair, just another manifestation, a support to the special report of Ian Mark Nakaya. Labina sa Kening idiklara na to Kageyan Dioro as the Center of Excellence in Whitewater River Rafting. Madam Chair, para nako, brag na ay branding crisis ang Kageyan Dioro. Akong nakita, how many times that I saw some Facebook posts na maingon sila, nasa folder nila, maingon nga, may Kageyan Dioro trip. Pero majority, ang nasa picture, the hilayan, divine mercy, usahay ang atong Kening nasa upol, Seven Seas. And most of the time, ang atua, maingon pagod, lagindingan airport, which is majority pagod, ako makita, mora ko maguol mo tanong nga, Kageyan Dioro trip. Pero majority sa mga pictures, dilig, actually, Kageyan Dioro. And tama ang special report, Madam Chair nga, mo mani ang atua, mo mani atong strength, mo mani ang, kung pangutanon ni mo tanong na nakatistingo River Rafting, Kageyan Dioro has the best River Rafting nga experience. And I know way back when I was still in ABS, grabe magito ang suporta sa una nga, nahimo maginisi ang brag main branding sa Kageyan Dioro that we have the best River Rafting. So, I think, Madam Chair, again, as a support to this special report, then, Madam Chair, it's about time, tama ni. Pokosa na to, balik ta, Kageyan Dioro, kita ang naay pinakaninot nga River Rafting sa Tibok Pilipinas. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. So, let us separate. I still wanted this investigated with the Committee on Environment because this is still an ongoing problem, was never resolved, even despite the time that this was conducted. A meeting was conducted, a hearing, committee hearing was just the same. I do not want that if ever there's an excellence, it's really excellence, in a real sense of the word nga, Kene, River Rafting, which is the primary tourist attraction ever since we started. Kada maginuna, ugma, butang mangali excellence. I hope that the Committee on Environment can also address on that issue about this quarrying. Thank you very much. Refer to committee, environment, and tourism, yes. So, the next speaker will be Counselor Bernie Espasia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ako lang ang dalion, Madam Chair. Yesterday, naimbitaran ko, Madam Chair, sa usak gamay lang ang sinibrasyon. Kung na-timingan nga dito kini dapit sa may Pahiron, Lumbia Village. And siyempre, Madam Chair, ako maning distrito, distrito uno. So, ako nalang podgi grab ang opportunity nga makita Kening, gitawag nila nga, kundi ko sayop, 722. No, tama, 722 nga housing. And kundi po ko sayop, mo man ata ning gidonate sa Japan government. I was so amazed kay guapo kaayo ang hitsura. Tapos, kung tanaw ni mo, Madam Chair, single detached siya nga balay. kani, ko river rafting, which, nadugay natasaray, which is the primary tourist attraction ever since we started. Kada magiduna, ugma, buta mangali excellence. I hope that the Committee on Environment can also address on that issue about this quarrying. Thank you very much. Refer to Committee, Environment, and Tourism, yes. So the next speaker will be Counselor Bernice Parsia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ako lang ang daliyon, Madam Chair. Yesterday, na invitearan ko, Madam Chair, sa usak gamay lang ang sinibrasyon. Ong na-timingan nga, dito kinidapit sa may pahiron, Lumbia Village. And, siyempre, Madam Chair, ako maning distrito, distrito uno, so ako nalang podgi grabang opportunity nga, makita kining gitawag nilang, kundi ko sayo, 722. No, tama, 722 nga housing, and kundi po ko sayo, moman ata ning gidonate sa Japan government, no? I was so amazed kay, guapo kayo ang itsura. Tapos, kung tanaw ni mo, Madam Chair, single detached siya nga balay. Tapos, kundi po ko sayo, 27 square meter floor area ani, tapos ang lapo na niya is 70 square meters. So kung imo gin tanaw, guapo gikini siya kumpara sa uban ng mga housing agihatang na to sa gobyerno. Na hinabi na ko ang former hoang, ng president nila, and ako silang ipangutanas, kung inyong, sa inyong mga tapok-tapok deri kay, every Sunday naman sila, mora misa-misa. Kung ilag yong kwintahon, ang physically nga gapuyo lang yod, ano ni mga balayan, narag yod sa almost 200. So, kung gitawan ni sag 722, so 722 ka housing, so kung ilag yong kwintang kwintahon, almost 200 lang ang naag yod na moyod siya. And muning mga pipila, Madam Chair, nga kung nakita, first, ang mga unit, kung tanaw ninyo sa pictures ka rin, nangabuak ang mga bintana, puno nagsagbot, ang uban sagbot nanulod na sa balay. So technically, kung tanaw kini mo siya, wagin na moyo, lay putong naibalay, pero gisiratan lang kay, mora na caretaker. Kani, wala yod, wala yod, abri ang door, abri ang nangabuak ang bintana. So open yod siya, kung tanaw ni mo, wala yod nagoccupy. So gisusin na to na, medyo ang uban galing sa sulod, napuno na sa vandalism, mga tae sa hayop, dagan na kayo. Napoy part diha ang naigo, kung ako lang matamata, pagkaywa, maku kita good sa layout ani, kung ako lang matamatahon, more than 5 pod ka units ang nahugno na sa landslide. Kung kani nga picture borag na siya sa abay aniya nga, nahugno na yod siya na, tungo sa landslide, nahulog na. Ako na ang nagtalikod, okay, yan. So kani nga mga unit, Madam Chair, kung tanaw ka na to, tungo kay, way bintana, way portahan, so technic, o kana, kana nga unit, muna ng mga usasa, na landslide na na siya, nahulog na na siya. Tapos, ang napanasay mga kalinya nga, medyo nahulog na pod. So kung tanaw na to, waly, ang mga sagbot, grabe kayo, wala yod tao nga nagpuyo, okay? Tapos, napoy mga CRs nga, nangawala na ang mga baul. So mga, well, allegedly, ipangawat na. Sa ato pa nakita, preyan ng balayan na, ang mga sagbot nanulod nagyod taon sa panimalay. So technically, wala yod morag caretaker, baka nga, gyan na lang, tapos balikan na na. So, unoccupied yod sa technically, wala yod ma, ano no? Tapos, naadayo yong mga ipang-storya nga, dito sa unahan, nae gapuyo, and allegedly, ipang-squat lang daw tong mga balay, dilig daw tong maugyod ang mga, pero need pa na ko na-everify, Madam Chair, kung gid-squat. Pero ang mga tao nag-ingon na, kana sila dia, ni sulod lang na ng balay, tawa na nilagi nabugaw, so na, ayad din, wala na, daw na din sila manghawa, okay? So, ako lang, Madam Chair, mula ni akong question, una, I want to know kung, unsa na magi-status ani nga housing, Madam Chair, kay again, guapo kayo yod, tapos, paran ako, gidonate traban ni, tap kung ikaw mang good, nagdonate ka ba, tap makita ka sa imong gidonate na, wala magamit or napasagdan lang, mora saggagbiag ma, diba? Parabag, dinalan dito mga tag, kay sayang man, ano? Also, I want to know, Madam Chair, I know na yong mga inanipod kay, sa mga series of mga hearings na makaubansag ko, naman sa tema dunggan nga, giaward na sa ilang unit, pero dilig sila gusto mo, mo dawat, or di nila puyan tungod sa kalayo, or wala'y panginabuyan, which is also legit also. So, pangutanas ako kung, what will happen, kung what if ang imong gitagaan, dilig yod sa ganahan mo dawat? Pwede baka na nga ihatang na lang yod sa tao, nga willing na lang yod nga mo dawat? Kay I know, grabe pagit ang backlag ka rin sa mga, labi na kay, I know that that housing is for, is dedicated for the Sindong victims. And lastly, Madam Chair, pag, ang should, I know should may, ang kuwan ani'ng mga housing, is should really monitoring these units, after releasing base unit, if ipasagdan ra sa gitagaan, for example, gitagaan ko, tapos, ipasagdan lang ako, o ipasagdan ako nainganal ang unit, then, what will happen, or unsay proseso? Kay I know, I know yod nga, again, ako nga turn, Madam Chair, legit, usahay na yong maingon nga, unsa manamunang balay nga ihatag sa mo, layo man, uy, layo, pliti pa, layo pas panginabuyan, which is ako, makaononas ako nga, tama sa, pero mula na akong ginasulti pon nga, what if, kung dilig yod sila ganan na, pwede ba na'y proseso ano, or nabay pinakadugay nga, what if kung ipasagda na, ihatang na lang yod na to, sa katong mga tao nalang pod yod nga willing pod ana nga unit? Mula na nga akong gusto may bawan, Madam Chair. Kay again, nasayangan lang ko nagtanaw sa atong mga unit nga, guapo, rabakayo. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Counselor Bernice Parsia, of course. Counselor Edgar Cabana, Majority Floor Leader, Counselor Edgar Cabanlas, you have the floor.
You know, Madam Chair, in the, in the history of my 72 years in life, I always consider Counselor Bernie Parsia, my friend. My total respect to him, as a medium man before. And I was always under the impression that in every report of any medium man, the best tool of proper reporting is verified. But this was posted already in the, in the social media, so we have no time to respond. It could have been better if that report was made here, so that we can properly dissect the report. Now, I'll just go back a little bit to our history. Why this 722? Is this real or just surreal part of the imagination of people? Yes, there are 722 houses that was donated by the, by the Japanese government. But then, there was a condition that the city government, the local government of Cagayan de Oro, should provide for the land, where these 722 materials, because these is materials, housing materials, not cash, shall be erected. Now, since there was no immediate location where we can place these 722 units of housing, the materials were deposited in Vietnam. So it took a lot of many years, it took a lot of time before this was actually delivered to us here in Cagayan de Oro. When Mayor Moreno was the mayor in 2013, I was not a member of City Council then. And so also in the second term of Mayor Moreno in 2016, I was not yet. I was the defeated vice mayor candidate at that time. There was an action done by the 2013 administration, but considering that the City Council at that time was not with him. The buying of the purchase of the property of that land, there in pahiron was not immediately made possible. So it is only in the later part of the second term of Mayor Moreno that the property was bought in pahiron. So kung inyong tanaw, ang atong mga materialis, medyo ipantayan na, uban nangabuak na. Sindong visited us in 2011. Can you imagine, 2017 or 18, nagsugo the construction? Now, but 722, is not really 722 there? Because the land area cannot accommodate 722? What was, what can be accommodated in pahiron is only 511 units. The 126 units, 186 units, because 500 naman dito, ang 186 units dito nabutang sa Makapaya. Unya, ang 25 ka units, or 25 ka mga benefisaryo, dito nakabutang sa Gawad Kaliga San Miguel, sa Balobal. Now, unsa may nitabuk na sa 511 ka mga benefisaryo sa pahiron, nagkuha ang gobyerno sa contractor. Edun na to, the name of the contractor, here. It was not the City Council at that time. So out to be 500, 200 ra ang nacontractor sa contractor. And then out to be balad nga 200, na ay 100 plus nga, medyo nahuman na, mukotong dikita nga picture, pero wala pa maturnover, wala pa maturnover sa contractor sa ciudad. Sudili pa ka action ang ciudad, pag ha, pag hatag dani nga mga unit, kay wala pa maturnover. Basig do na pay kulang, wala man ang contractor. Unya, ang balad nga 100, wala pa matukod. So, kung imong tanaw, kayo, imong analisyon, ang 200 plus, na ay 120, wala pa maturnover. Wala ra mag 400 ang atong units nga. Now, katung na turnover sa ciudad was only 211, mo ka na karoon ang namuyod ka rin dia. Mo ka na sila karoon ang namuyod dia. Now, Madam Chair, when Mayor Clarix took over as mayor, that was in 2019, and then the administration of Mayor Clarix was besieged with that complaints before. There's a key problema, oh, we know that, nga ang should kini to, kapamaligya o, maligya or ano na, wala tuo, baligya din eh, mga sindikato diha sa sulod. So, there was a heartache, sakit ang ulo sa atong mayor. There was a change of administration sa should, yelisda nantan, dali magipang-investigado. And then there was a mandate of Mayor Clarix nga, investigahon, kinsa katong mga benefisaryo, na nakadawat, ini kinamay report ka, dilig mga, dilig mga qualified, nangakakuha. So, kung imong kwintahon, Madam Chair, gikan sa pag sugod pagka mayor, Mayor Clarix, it's barely, almost, it's only about one year and a half. And then if you will start investigating all these allegations of mismanagement or whatever, it will take you, it will take you 20 years. So, muna nga, galisyon ang atong administration ka rin. But one thing is your, first, naunahan na sila, naunahan na sila ni Bernie, ni Counselor Bernie, but the city government now will insist on getting kining 100 ka mga balay nga wala pa maturnover. Bisan, ug wala pa maturnover. Ikadwa, kana 100 nga wala pa matukod sa contractor, atong ipatawag ang contractor, patong latigon, ngaano man ay wala pa madimohman? And that was, sigina mo siya la. I mean, this report of Counselor Bernie is a good report, but it is not the first time when a report kini, I have reported it twice already. Kaniya tumpay, kaniya problema dia, wala'y tubig. Atong ipatawag ang city, di, uh, di, uh, di PDW. Atong, sila ipanghidan duka? Una nga, nabutangan up tubig. That was why, katung 200 plus nga, atong tagaan si ilang mga balay. Nahimo, kina na may tubig. We think the problema, uh, gud, two nga problema. So muna nga, these are the facts, Madam Chair. I hope, uh, Consulor Bernie, uh, na atong expahaniya na. But of course, he was always present during our committee hearings sa Urban Poor Housing. Uh, he'll always be invited and ask him to be present. Kaya lagi, ating patawag ang contractor ka tubig. Pero, ang igawas impression magkaroon nga, dun ay sibin na date dito nya, 200 right? Sa tagaan, ang 500 kabuk nawala.
So wala nakompleto, gud, ang construction.
But actually, kung imong tanawan ng facts. Different. So I hope, uh, that would.
So, Majority Floor Leader, this is an ongoing progress. The, uh, the houses that were not occupied will soon be given.
If, because we will be insisting on that.
Ah, okay.
Pero ang problema manggud, kinalagay ng abuak na, kaya wala malagay ni ma turnover pa.
So how can the, how can the city do something about nga wala pa na turnover? That is a problem now.
Namay ko'y mga, mga beneficiary, Madam Chair nga. Bisan to duka, ngabuak na, kinalay, tiwas, kinalay, saba. And we will be catering on this. Otherwise, I think we have to, we have to recommend to the mayor. Kita na lang magbalik na ng mga. Kana mga unoduro dya, kana ngabuak. Mga winta na dyan, kana ngabuak, mga jealousy, kana ngabuak. We will just restore this, uh, things. So that people can occupy it.
Matagan, matag.
So that would be the, my answer. I, I, I am. This is, you know, the chairman of the committee, we, the committee members. We do not participate in running the tsud. We leave this office alone to perform its function.
But was this, uh, was this?
Policy making ramda.
Majority Floor Leader, was this addressed through the media? I mean, their colleague Attorney Rolio. Was this addressed, these questions that needs to be addressed?
Uh, you know Attorney Rolio, I think is about 14 months from siya na. Pag ipatawag, kabaluna ba ka na siya sa history?
So anyway, anyways, at least makibaluta, no? So what's really happening, no? Yes, thank you very much, Majority Floor Leader. Attorney, Consular Attorney Edgar Cabanlas, yes, Attorney James Judith, you have the floor.
Na lang ko'y itataw klarohon, Madam Chair, kay isip vice chair ni Consel Cabanlas sa Urban Poor. Um, klarohon ko lang to, kina among ko'y lakang sa storya nga. How is, giunsa nga day tood, na posible ba nga? Ang turnover is partial lang, delay ang kinatibukan? Possibly ba na nga, katabo, I mean, kana lang nga punto, gusto na ako maklaro, posible ba nga partial turnover?
Kaya possible ka na, kaya di man imo mahuman, diltsun ang 500 kabuk balay. So gianam ba, gianam. Ang mga tao ka kasikisin, gud. Siyano ka yah, di have to wait from 2011 up to 2019? That's around eight years. So, unsa katung na human?
Hatag na.
Hatag na lang.
So napay balanse, sir, kung tugutanimo, Madam Chair. Uh, kaya ginanlan to na siya project 722, kaya 722 ka units, gud, ang tukuro, literal.
Actually, in my thinking, it's not based on the units, based on the beneficiaries.
Ah, so 722 lagi ka beneficiary, subut pa sa both, literal gapon, equivalent, kada isa ka beneficiary, isa ka unit. So, so project 722, ang ako lang is, samatap pa sa iha ni Consel Sparsia. Na ay mga 200 kapin, so pwede panato, paninglan ang contractor sa balanseng ang kinintos kapin? Kung wala pa sayo?
Dilim na.
Ah dilim na.
Dilim na, kaya, nanamay na, nanamay na turnover dito nga 200 plus.
Yes.
Niya na 126 dito sa.
Pending, ah.
Plus na yah, cinta kapin din sa GK San Miguel. Ang atong paninglan siya mga 200 na lang. Pero naanamay, nahuman naman nga 100, pero wala lang maturnover. Pero ang wala, kini na masugdi, ma 100 kapin.
So balanse na lang it sa kinatibukan, Majority Floor Leader, Madam Chair is 100.
111, or yes.
Muna atong paninglan, kukurun na to ang contractor para sa balanseng 100 kapin.
Yes, yes, you're correct, uh, and in fact. I don't want to see this here, pero ang atong, ang contractor ma man, problema swerta. That's why we will be there, we will invite the contractor, he will be there.
Okay, yes, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Consular, uh, yes, Consular Ian Mark Nakaya, last, Consular Bernice Sparsia.
Thank you for the report, Consular Sparsia. We thought that this project has already been turned over. And everything has already been put in place, considering that it has taken quite a time already. But, uh, again. Uh, there were discussions in the past. As regards the matter, it was even. Uh, question as to how the tsud was conducted. As an office in charge of the, the entire operations of housing. In the city of Cague and Duro. If 722 project has a deficiency and a concern of more than 100 units that, uh, were not yet turned over. The big question there, Madam Presiding Officer, is, these are supposed to be for the victims of Sendo. How about those, uh, donations? That were given to the city of Cague and Duro way back in 2011, 2012, and up to the present? How? Do our tsud office fare? In the administration of, uh, housing? We are kept in the dark. And, uh, we do not know until somebody rose and talk about these things. And now that it has, uh, been discussed. We would like to inquire further. Can tsud report to us? Kay, grabe biya kaya ang mga donations sa construction na ito. Dayon, nga no dilim ang gud, uh, ga ka plastar. I remember, ang, ang, ang priority at ito is katung dito sa Kauswagan. Na Daplin sa River. Namating mo to din eh, namiting to din eh, sa may ngalan atong mga sityo. Uh, I don't know what happened, kung na relocate na ba sila tanan. Or di na lang magpa relocate karoon, kaya tungod kaya gika po'y naghulak. Uh, I hope we can do something about this, Madam Presiding Officer.
Okay, thank you very much, Consular Ian Mark Nakaya, are you done? Oh, yeah, you, then Attorney, uh, Consular Attorney, diba, I called you already, right? Okay, then I called Attorney, uh, Consular Ian Nakaya, Nakaya? Okay, then I'm calling Attorney, uh, Consular Attorney Joey Abo.
Thank you again, uh, thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. I remember it sometime, perhaps ma-March mas siguro to. When, uh, the Majority Floor Leader, Consular Cabanlas, made a special report with regard to the transaction of the tsud. I, I also, um, rejoined, made a rejoinder with his special report. And asked tsud to submit the inventory of the housing as to pila mangkay ganit, sama sa ginayingon. Uh. Dagan pa kayo, in fact, decide puna ko na siya ng example, kini sa pahiron, kining, uh, subject sa report ni Consular Sparsia. Na dagan kayo, papakanti nga Yuta, Amin Balay, pero wala pa'y gapyo. That's why I made the emotion as well, that the tsud should submit to the committee on Urban Poor and Housing. An inventory of all the houses available, and as to whether the present occupants or awardees are really qualified. To that, Madam Presiding Officer, I am reiterating such motion. For tsud to submit an inventory of all the houses and report to the chairman on the committee of Urban Poor and Housing on this matter. Thank you.
Okay, so again, refer to the committee on Urban Poor. And Consular Ian Mark Nakaya also mentioned about the donations during the sendong. Probably include that too. If there's any donations regarding on housing, include that. Uh, you want also to speak? Okay, one second, one second.
Literally, one second, Madam Chair, ina nila. Uh, namang ko'y katung na bungat ni Consihal Nakaya, Madam Chair. Katung sa isla Bognaw, nito, isla, kining karoon, naapiktuhan sa pagdemolison dya sa River Boulevard. Na may nagpabiliin pag gapon, pero possibly, dako gina nga, nga problema na pod, gamo balik, regapon sila, kaya wala ma sila kabalinan. So ang ako, di pa ka, kaya nagigun man ganyan, Madam Chair, si Consel Cabanlas nga, napatay kukurun, bali sa contractor mga, uh, sa kagatos kapin, bali nga mga units. Di pa ka pwedeng ato na lang nangigahin sa ilad dya, kaya possibly mo balik naman potongnya ni sila, kaya wala lagi silang ay kabalinan. Ako, para lang ina ni, baka balukon, taas pa kayang proseso pag inventaryo. Ang ako lang, sigun lang sa tubag, sa karoon nga naa karoon ang demolisyon nga gitigayon ni Attorney Egay Uy. Di pa ka pwedeng ato nga tag sila, kaya pila man nakabukda ang naa nagplastar karoon, nga mo balik, regapon na sila, kaya naara sa kile dang ilang mga gamit. So mo balik, regapon na sila karoon paglinaw na pod, ako lang ya hatag mo lang kanato sila.
One minute na to, one second.
Katula, ako, katula, kinatibukan na.
So that goes back, that goes back to the committee again, no? Committee on Urban Poor. And I understand, before the demolition, I understand that there should be already a housing ready for them. I hope it's true. So that's the problem. Last, pinaka last. How can you, how can you demolish without having a place to stay? So award na ginatanan ng ato, wala na gini ba nga bakante, nga mahatag? That is precisely why you have to take action on that.
Madam Chair, just want to clarify, so, uh, katulang ganina, so katung mga pictures na ako ipakita nga wala nagoccupy. Mauto ang mga unit nga, wala pa na turnover. Possibly, okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, so discuss it thoroughly. Uh, in your committee, Majority Floor Leader, Consular Attorney Edgar Cabanlas, yes.
You know, these committees, behind these committees.
Correct. That is true.
So thank, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I hope, I hope you can, kayamanimo, you can have, uh, you know, a more, uh, what you call this, report, no? A thorough report regarding the tsud, no issue. Anyway, the next speaker, who is the next speaker? Consular Roger Abada, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Bibutar Rodriguez. My colleagues in the 20th City Council. Our friends and people Cague and Duro were watching us virtually. And here in the gallery, and members of Trimedia, friends, ladies, and gentlemen. My report, this is the report. Uh, let me share to you what transpired last September 15, this year. This presentation was commissioned by our Honorable City Mayor, Orlando Clarix Uy, to represent him. On the culmination and lessons learned conference conducted by UN Habitat. Healthy Oceans and Clean Cities Initiative for HUSI, uh, at Radisson Park, uh, in, in Kison City. So gikan sa housing, dini puntas sa basura. Okay, uh, uh, it was attended by selected six pilot cities in the Philippines. Our city, Cague and Duro, Manila City, Davao City, Ormooc City, Ligaspi City, Kalapan City. Now, it's a city presented, share, presented and shared lessons learned. In waste management and plan of actions of marine leader and experiences. Our city, together with Clean Row Manager Armin Quinka and his assistant and staff. And in MRF Cooperative Representative, presented our topic. Inclusive Plastic Circularity Through Improved Waste Data Management. Integrated With Technology and Community-Based Solution. Was presented during our conventional. Now, our city was awarded a plaque of recognition from the UN Habitat or HUSI. Due to our performance and good practices in waste management performance, municipal solid waste, uh. Please, uh, okay, that was the one. Now, as a result, and this was also presented to them, to the, during the convention. The CDO, as of now, 2000, uh, this year. CDO generates 297 tons of municipal waste daily. With generation rate of 0.38 kilogram per capita. So the graph indicates, kana pinataas dya. CDO faces challenges managing plastic waste effectively. With a significant portion ending up in landfills or dump sites, 72%. However, there are positive aspects such as collection rate is 90%. And imports on informal and informal sector sorting, 17% and 2% respectively. Sa informal, 17%, kana siguro mga barangay na mga MRF, o kana mga, mga pangulik sa basura. Contributing the recycling and recovery of plastic waste. Okay, that is the flow, uh, the solid waste flow in Cague and Duro City, no? Now, based on study. Uh, Cague and Duro, uh, by using waste waste city stool watch. Has very low recovery rate, look at this slide. 4% most are food waste, uh, contributes significantly. Kana mga baho, mga pagkaon, mga prutas nada sa balay, o sa mga malls or establishment. Now notably, the city has a strong higher disposal collective rate, 92%. Uh, ensuring the 91% generated waste is effective, so magragi surplus ta sa, uh, atong pagcollection. But, kana 92%, that is mixed, mixed na siya, wala na ma-segregate. So na karoon sa atong landfill. So, however, challenges persist that nine tons daily of controlled waste. And two tons daily of projects residual requiring attention. So for the city's commitment to responsible waste management, there is a need to address the challenges. Focus on reducing environmental impact, robust collection system. Enhance recycling, sorting imports down to the barangays. Improving waste infrastructure like MRF, MRF facilities. Educating the community, active participation from various stakeholders to prevent waste leakage. Uh, to make the city, uh, plan of action. Uh, to make the city plan of action, anata'y plan of action for 10 years, 10 years, no? Gibuot na sa Clean Row, nung nagitawak to si Puah. City Plan of Action on Marine Leaders. So, that should be workable. So the city is will, so that the city is well positioned to achieve more sustainable and environmental friendly future. Now. The city also passes the SDG or Social Development Goal. We have gathered 11.61. As the proportion of municipal solid waste collected and managed in control facilities. Out of total municipal solid waste generated by the cities, no? Next slide, okay, look at this slide. The below portion, no? In parallel, the WAC or Waste Wise Analysis City Stool, morning sa study. Enable estimation of plastic waste emission to the environment. Thus, the plastic leakage, kana sa plastic na siya. The plastic leakage was determined at 11% of 1,068,4 tons per year. From the total plastic waste generation of 15,000 tons per year. Kaning batol, sasi, silupin, all kinds of plastic, no? So the volume of plastic waste retained on land and water drains and ultimately contributes to the marine leader. Na dya, sa ubos, balik, ibalik sa two slide, kana brown downward. Naanamuna ka, kada magulan, mo bagyo dini sa Cague and Duro. Una ginato, makita man lutaw ang mga plastics, batol, mga solid, na sa atong kanal, o na sa atong drainage. So, 11% na dya, na, kana ko, no? Okay, so. Hence, the passage of Republic Act 11898, or the Extended Producer Responsibility Act, or EPRA. In July 2022, amending the Republic Act 903, or Ecological Solid Waste Management of 2,000. Send a signal for a closer collaboration between the local waste management. Kana atong mga faktorida, Viabnistli, Coca-Cola, Pepsi, URC, kana ni adini, mga malls. So, we have to collaborate with this, uh, establishment. So that we will be able to address the situation. Now actors and the private sectors to adopt and implement policies for the proper management of plastic packaging, uh, waste. Now, uh, the city, we have passed our existing ordinance. Section 12. This is an MRF for schools. So, osan is a problema na to ang kining, uh, mga schools, kana dyan, they have to maintain their MRFs, or segregation. Na dya, nakabutang, section 13, the duty of the barangay council. So it shall be the duty of the respective barangay council to primarily enforce and supervise solid waste management. Collection, segregation, reduce recovery, and waste generated by household buildings, premises. And the premises places of business within the respective, uh, boundaries. Section 15. Uh, section 15. Uh, condominium and subdivision, that should be, this should be required. Then section 16, uh, no, uh, section 17. Non-collection of unsegregated solid waste. So, only segregated waste and only the types of waste that are scheduled for collection in particular. And the day, the time shall be collected, provided the specific day, and shall be provided by the IIR. So na muna karoon, ano is scheduling, but katung anang, kana atong kakita, dagan halos tanan, gareklamo karoon, tanan sektor. Ngawa wala mga hakut ang basura. Tinuda, pero wala saob sila kabalo. Ngawun sa sob ang mga basura, nga nga ilabay, nga nga yakutun sa atong, uh, private contractor sa basura. So. Ilang ipasa tanan ang problema sa gubernos, sa ciudad. So, naamantay ordinance sa, diba section 18? Well, the collected biodigribal and recyclable waste shall be dropped off at the barangay MRF. Only residual and special waste shall be brought to, uh, the disposal site. So, maunay tabo karoon. Paspas kayo hakut, hakut ta tanan, pero wala ma-segregate. Bisan dini sa ato, si sa atong, uh, sa city hall. Ang atong disposal dini indiscriminately, wala ginta magpraktis sa atong kagulingon, nga balaon. So mauna, I have talked with the Clean Row, nga they will now, uh, be, wala pa'y, kwan na, signal sa kwan, executive order pa. Ngay effective October 1. They will now impose strictly the segregation, uh, policy under the ordinance. Kay, kining da kusog mereklamo, morning mga violators, halos tanan mga violators. So, they will start in schools and private and government schools. And, uh, barangay one to party, and the rest will follow. That is one way how to solve, how to, uh, improve our solid waste, uh, management, uh, program. So that we will be, we will have a clean, green, and healthy, uh, environment. Thank you very much, uh, Madam Chair and my colleagues.
Thank you very much, Consular Roger Abada, any comment? Okay, so our next speaker is the Majority Floor Leader, Consular Attorney Edgar Cabanlas.
Uh, salamat kayo, uh, Madam Chair. Kini akong report mo buro ni kayo. Ato tas sa ubang mga kabir kaduhan sa Kalibutan. Di na lang tab, siya, bukid nun, siya, si kasa, dini mindanaw. Wok may bayad ang panghi. Bagay, manakas airport, di ka man gapehiron, manakasa. Pentalan di ka man gobe, manakas mga mursi ka man gabayad, manikas city hall di ka man gabayad. Pero nganuman nga gabayad, menta mengi, tadi sa kabir kaduha. Kabir kaduhan sa atong bayad. Taksik ko kius, medinabayad, kada panghi, ya kumali bangkis. Dabi, dabi kuwa kikwerta. Asa ka man mengi. Kaban melibang. Ah, wino, ang gakamitan, kabir kadu. Mga kabusitong may iksoon. Lumato bisa, ato bisa siisim, dito ma. So. Unya, kining pagpangapang, pangayon natus bayad, diya sa kabir kaduhan nga mga kasilyas. Nakakus pinig ka gubut, nakakus sa pagduda, na ay mga kakaitabong, mga mga skrito. So. If we can afford to hire 1,000 or 500 mga casuals or mga GOS, only kama mo hire, o bayti kabuk, limpyo na ng kasilyas. Para lang nga, di na tamagpabayad. So, Madam Chair, bruna ako isip sa report, I would like to refer this to the committee on Economic Enterprise. It is prepared and ordinance, you will ask the mayor. Mayor, I think the mayor will agree with us, si mayor pa. Ngaw, putun tanan kana pag, pag, uh, pagbayad sa CR. Tapos ay, kung menghika, na pwede mabalikanimo, o tissue. Ginigusyo.
Hindi mo na niggusyo.
Tinuda. So, undangun tanan gini, Madam Chair, kay ngilad kayo. So that is the report, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, that's a very good report. I hope this will be referred to the Committee on Business and Economic Enterprise and nakadalagyo kagubot, tinood na. And then, karon, at least everybody is free, that is a public property. So we might as well give the free benefits to this, our constituents. Yes, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya of the floor.
Contrary to the manifestation that in public markets, all are free. In modern countries, Madam Presiding Officer, Japan, US, European countries, public toilets are for EPA. And I, but I go along, I go along if the intention is really for the people. But is the special report also extends to other public toilets that we are operating right now? There are.
Yeah, all, all. I think all, we cannot be.
Not only in public markets, we have, we have in divisoria.
Ay, nila kita.
No, all public toilets, mangka, the public, public is public. So let us, of course, other than who is against it, no? So let's find a way, no? Our people is galiso na manggane, ugpalit ang mga bisandig panakot. Now here they are paying for this, ano, toilets, I am against that. I am sorry, I have to devoice my own opinion. So Committee on Economic Enterprise, all public and health, no, and all public toilets, yes. Tanan, kay public man. Tanan guyot, tanan, kay public man. So let us not be, ano, let's not be very specific. Kay kung iyon, public, public, yata nan, dili pwede nga, keni di rebayaran, dito di libayaran. So tanan nagitya, usa mo pangutang na, Counselor Attorney James Judith.
Pwet, usa akong panginong, punto, kay, ang gibutang rabat dini masisa nagtekstato. Ang ihiko nodos ang libang singko.
Na muna na, mahal giapon.
So muna, kumaski, asa ka panginong, naagapon kay Bayronon, masamot na kong diskarga gika. Ang ako lang is, diskarga mayor, ang problema lang is, naalay komplikasyon kay, di ba na tay kontrata sa mga PWD sa divisoria? So pwede na to historahan, kinala malibre na kita, kita nalam atag budget dayon sa PWD.
Ah, iabolison, na dabi kosa project lonhow.
Aso mawala na giapon.
But then you can still discuss with the PWDs, no?
Yes, kay basing ipasa na to sa ila, maski madevlop na, sila giapon ang magbayad na sa ila. Dapat kita na mo ang kun sa gasto, hanan na lang, Madam Chair.
Yes, dagan paagit, correct. So thank you very much, so that's a very good report, Majority Floor Leader, Counselor Edgar Cabanlas. So, wala na, no? Okay.
Madam Chair, permission to proceed?
Yes, Majority Floor Leader Attorney Edgar Cabanlas.
Business of the day, number one, item one, proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash five zero three, returning to the barangay council, barangay taglima. How tall, how tall? Up to two, ba? Ah, akun tanan. Returning to the barangay council, barangay taglima, the city ordinance number one, series of two twenty-three, covering its annual budget for CY twenty twenty-three with an estimated income of three million eight hundred and seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight pesos with information that the ordinance is operative in its entirety. May I request that Counselor Liam, Ian Lam Liam to be recognized.
Counselor Alan Liam, you are recognized.
Madam Chair, everything is in order, I move to approve proposed resolution number two zero two three dash five zero three.
Any second, objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve and second and final reading.
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item two, proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three five zero four, returning to the Sanguinian Kabataan Obaga Kanituan, the city's resolution numbers three, series of twenty twenty-three, covering its annual budget for CY twenty twenty-three with an estimated income of three million six hundred twenty-six thousand, six hundred eighty-six pesos with information that the resolution is operative in its entirety. May I request Counselor Jan Sano be recognized.
Counselor Jan Michael Sano, you are recognized.
Thank you so much, Madam Presiding Officer, I assume for the approval of its resolution.
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve and second and final reading.
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Number three, proposed resolution twenty twenty-three five zero five, accrediting the citizens' watch for good governance link for purposes of its membership in the local special bodies pursuant to DILG Circular twenty twenty-two, thus eighty-three and article sixty-four, rule thirteen of the rules and regulations implementing the nineteen ninety-one Local Government Code or funding its project from the city or other sources as required under the COA Circular Pertinent There To. May I request that Counselor, Counselor, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya be recognized.
Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya, you recognize?
Move for its approval.
Any second, objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve and second and final reading.
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Number four, proposed resolution twenty twenty-three dash five zero six, extending the updating of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, CLUP of the city, City of Cagayan Dioro, to cover a planning period of twenty twenty-four to twenty thirty-two as recommended by the Department of Human Settlements and Urban Development issued three June tenth. My request, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya to be recognized.
Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya, you recognize?
For congruence of the planning period, Madam Presiding Officer and as requested by the Regional Director of the Department of Human Settlements and Urban Development, may we move for the approval?
Any second, objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve and second and final reading.
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Number five, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three two nine four, appropriating the sum of thirty-two thousand forty-four pesos and seventy-seven centavos from the item non-office general public services sector special purpose fund, terminal leave benefits monetization of earned leave credits earmarked for Doctor different Celeste, medical officer four of the city hall department, the twenty twenty-three annual budget to be made available for the payment of the terminal leave pay of the late Mr. Osendo Ocolares, former sanitation inspector two of city office, who died last December four twenty twenty-two. May I request Counselor Gerly Balaba to be recognized.
Counselor Gerly Balaba, you recognize?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair. I move for the approval of proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash two nine four.
Any second, objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve and second and final reading.
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item six, proposed, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three two nine five, appropriating the sum of six thousand pesos from the salary savings of item number twenty-five, administrative aid two under the personal services of the city chief executive office for the period January one to January ten twenty twenty-three in the twenty twenty-three annual budget to be made available for the payment of the unpaid claim for CY twenty twenty-two clothing allowance of Miss Judy Alarcon, license inspector one, who was appointed as regular permanent plantilla personnel of the city chief executive office effective January two twenty twenty-two. May I request Counselor Alan Liam to be recognized.
Counselor Alan Liam, you recognize?
Madam Chair, everything is in order, I assume proposed ordinance number two zero two three dash two nine five.
Any second, objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item seven, propose, move to approve, second and final reading.
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item seven, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three two nine six, appropriating the sum of one hundred forty-three thousand eight hundred and three pesos and thirty-six centavos from the salary savings of item number four, administrative aid two under the personal services of city disaster risk reduction management department for the period January one to April three twenty twenty-three, the twenty twenty-three annual budget to be made available for the payment of salaries, para, etc. for December one to thirty-one twenty twenty-two of the hiring employees who were appointed as regular permanent plantilla personnel of the CR, CDRR MD effective in December one twenty twenty-two. The attacha appendix, Madam Chair, is where the list of employees to benefit this ordinance. May I request that Counselor? Ian Lam Liam giapon.
Counselor, napay lain, Counselor. Alan Liam, you recognize?
Everything is in order, I assume for the approval of ordinance number two zero two three dash two nine six.
Any second, objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Any second, objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Number eight, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three two nine seven, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Uy, representing city government of Cagayan Dioro to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement with the Department of Trade and Industry Center for International Trade Expositions and Missions represented by its Executive Director, Dr. Edward L. Ferreira, covering the participation of the city government to the IFEX, for IFEX International Food Federation Philippines twenty twenty-three at World Trade Metro Manila under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. May I request Counselor George Go King be recognized, Madam Chair.
Counselor George Go King, you recognize?
May I, Madam Chair, I move to approve the proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash two nine seven.
Any second, objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve, second and final reading.
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item nine, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash two nine eight, approving application of Lombia Octagon Sports Arena represented by its president, Mr. Rodrigo, Rodrigo, Rodrigo Go for a permit to conduct a one-day, three-stud derby at the said arena, barangay Lombia di city, on September twenty twenty-three on the occasion of the sixty-eight Arawanang Lombia. May I request Counselor Roger, Chair Abaday be recognized.
Counselor Roger Abaday, you have the floor.
I move that this ordinance be approved considering that all the requirements under the law, under the ordinance is required, complied, Madam Chair and my colleagues.
Any second?
Second.
Second, objection, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve, second and final reading.
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item ten, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three two nine nine, approving alteration of plan of West Woods Village Subdivision Project located in barangay Carmen di city, particularly block five, lot seven, block seven, lot seven, block nine, lot six, by changing the land use thereof from buffer lots to road lots, five, five-three square meters and development of additional nine lots, units two thousand one hundred, two thousand one hundred seventy-five square meters with a total affected area of two thousand seven hundred thirty-one square meters as applied for by Pueblo Dioro Development Corporation represented by its president and general manager, Mr. Chrysler Biasebo. And for this purpose, amending ordinance twelve four zero one and twelve twelve, ah, twenty twelve, as amended, twenty twelve, as amended by ordinance number twelve nine one eight two fifteen and thirteen eight zero three twenty twenty. Move for its approval, Madam Chair.
Any second? Moment of inquiry, Counselor Attorney James Judith, you have the floor?
Yes, Madam Chair, ala kwiklarohon, wak matay pagsupak nini, pero akong nasabtan, gikan sa buffer lot nga classification, mahimo siyang road lot. Unya, kung himong basahon, base sa balao, ang buffer land, but pasabutan na, means an area of land in which development or site alteration is limited or prohibited by the official plan in order to protect the natural irritage features of the area or the ecological functions of the area from negative impacts. Kita na na kusugod sa panit, utinta, panginong sa nobintaisize. Wala man kwainakita, tuon, wala kwainapagsupak nga ilang giconvert, gikan sa buffer lot, panginong sa road lot, kay gusto nila subhan na ang development plan sa kasigpit nga the pit sa West Woods. Di in gane, nagpuyo si Consell Malburns Parsa. Ang ako lang is, wala na kuna kita sa attachments dini sa atong agenda book. Ngay, ang kaning two thousand kapin nga nawala, naggiconvert nila into road lot. Ngai ilang gitapal sa lai nila, sa tumoy bali gabahin sa ilang bagong ayuta nagde-kedevelop. Wala akong gusto klaron, wala nila na, wala sila nagtapal or nagtapal ba sila? Pero dilin ako makita, asa sila nagtapal.
Yes, Counselor, Majority Floor Leader.
Yeah, this was, the, I mean, the alteration here, Madam Chair, is that it is only a portion of that buffer zone. It's not actually the entire buffer zone that was affected. So when this was reviewed by the, by the, our city planning office and the city engineer, the, 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 the purpose for which the buffer zone was, was, was segregated was still served despite the fact that it was reduced already. So naagapon, wak man wala.
Ah, okay.
Naagapon, oh, naagapon ngkun. It's only, kay, ang, nakuaan lang kay gihimong dalan.
Gihimong dagamayra.
Oh, digamayra, dili, dilin ni siya.
Dagamayra ng buffer, saon?
Asa sa kinatibukan lagi, ang, kay, ang buffer, momi siya ang green belt. So, i-rerecognize na po ni Madam Chair. So I am presuming that I was only de-recognized, so ako lang is.
Recognized now.
Yes, I'm only de-recognized, Counselor Sano. So, but pasabot, sa kinatibukan sa buffer, nakuaan lang at two thousand sagapin.
No, no, nakuaan na siya five hundred?
Dagamayra niha.
Five hundred square meters ra.
Five hundred square meters, okay, naamon ko dini sa.
Ang, ang, namagisilik idevelop line area, nine lots, mukha ng two thousand. Aguy.
Kay, kung, kung masay, dili, dili, na, 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 kadiyan na. Possible, momi'ta gusto na ako klaron, naamon ko dini oh, na ang buffer lots sa katung number one, five hundred fifty-six square meters, na den additional lots, two thousand one hundred seventy-five, si kinatibukan, two thousand seven hundred thirty-one square meters. So muna gina konggingon nga, ang, ang gikuha bali sa entiro nga green belt, two thousand seven hundred thirty-one. Ang ako lang, green belt, mano ng buffer lot, mano ng buffer lot. So ang ako, but pasabot is, wala lagi sila nagtapal sa atong pagsabot nga kaning two thousand seven hundred thirty-one, gamayran ni siya sa kinatibukan nga buffer lot.
Di, di, dili lagi, dili lagi, two thousand nagkuha gikan sa buffer.
Five hundred lagi giapon, aso dilin ni mo katung additional lots.
Dili, lai na sa di, lai na sa. Dili ni siya buffer.
Ah, okay, okay, alright.
Okay ra, sige.
Okay, wala nagkitapal ang.
Ah, wala, sige na lang kay, damayram kay nakuha, five hundred square meters ra.
Okay.
Okay ra, okay.
So where are we now?
Ah, is a motion now.
Motion, this is second?
There is no objection.
Objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item eleven, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three three hundred, approving the alteration of plan of Siberia Estates Phase Six Ignacio's Enclave Phase Two Subdivision Project located in barangay Balolangdi city, particularly block eight, lot sixteen to twenty-one, block nine, lots twenty-two to twenty-three, block ten, lot twenty-four, block eleven, lots one to twelve and block twelve, lots one to three, with a total affected area of four thousand square meters by changing the type of project therein from walk-up condominium to residential house and lot as applied for by A. Brown Company Incorporated represented by Miss Joeline Magadan. And for this purpose, amending ordinance number one four one seventy-eight dash twenty twenty-one. May I request Counselor Joey Abu?
Counselor Joey Abu, you recognize?
Move for the approval of proposed ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash three zero zero.
Any second, objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Madam Chair, before that, kini, imis condominium, ilang dihimong residential, manu man. Kay, wayga palit, dili isa di wayga palit, kay, di nila.
Kay di nila gusto nga malandungan o mangitmit ang silingan.
Ah, okay.
Mukha na diya?
Oh, that's good.
That's good. Very good. So naku sa pagilanguna nga ibis taas, dinil na subus para delete maipiktuhan ang mga silingan. So move.
Wapupod, yeah.
Move to approve on second.
Any second? Objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Ah, for inclusion, items twelve, thirteen, fourteen,
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Move for its approval, Madam Chair.
Second objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Item twelve, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty three three zero one, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Uy to enter into and sign the contract of lease by and between the City Government of Cagayan de Oro and Miss Anne Blanco Agnes, covering the lease of the latter's doors five, six and seven with an aggregate floor area of ninety five point fifty square meters located at corner Rosal, Mabolo Streets, Carmen di city for the use of the office of the City Election Officer Cagayan de Oro City. This is a certified audit by the mayor. Madam Chief, may move for its approval?
Any second? Subjection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Item thirteen, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty three three zero two, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Uy, A Uy, representing City Government of Cagayan de Oro, to enter into and sign memorandum of understanding with the Aquanote Construction Corporation, represented by its president, Mr. Fredi Sakari Estuista, covering the collaboration of the parties in the preparation of a feasibility study for a maternal, ah, material, material recovery facility in the city. May I request Counselor Abaday to be recognized?
Counselor Abaday, you recognize?
I move for the approval of the proposed ordinance number twenty twenty three dash three zero two.
Any second objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Item fourteen, ordinance number twenty twenty three three zero three, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Uy, representing the City Government of Cagayan de Oro, to enter into and sign memorandum of agreement of understanding with the Standard Systems Water and Waste Water Technologies Inc., represented by its president, Mr. Patrick Gerard Villayu, covering the collaboration with the parties in the preparation of a feasibility study for a bulk water supply project in the city. May I request? Counselor Amy Moreno to be recognized?
Counselor Amy Moreno, you recognize?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Um, I move to approve proposed ordinance number twenty twenty three dash three zero three.
Second objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Last item, Madam Chair. Number fifteen, proposed resolution number twenty twenty three five zero seven, commending taxi cab driver Tomas Corpus of barangay Ipunan di city for his remarkable honesty of returning its owner, ah, to its owner, the wallet left in his vehicle subject to stalling. May I request Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya to be recognized?
Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya, you recognize?
Move for its approval, Madam Presiding Officer.
Second objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried. Honest is the best policy that was mentioned this morning by Missa Podang. So ah.
Ma, would you add there being no other matters to take up? Move to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Session adjourned. God bless us all.